I'd like to welcome everyone to our Candidates Forum. This is presented by the League of Women Voters of Winnebago County and the City of Nina. I'm Margie Davy, President of the League and tonight's moderator. Joining me on the panel is Karen Schneider, publisher of the Oshkosh Herald, Nina News, and Winnicott News. The League of Women Voters seeks to inform citizens about major public policy issues and about candidates seeking office. We never support nor oppose any political party or candidate. The League publishes a monthly newsletter and has an active Facebook page. For more information about the League of Women Voters, access our website at lvwwinnebago.org. Please be aware of important statewide races in the April elections so you have time to learn more and make informed decisions about the candidates. We're all about informed citizens, right? The Wisconsin Supreme Court has two candidates running for one open spot, and the incumbent for the Office of State Superintendent of Public Instruction has a challenger. Please check our Facebook page for resources to educate yourself on these offices and the candidates vying for them. We also have informational sheets on the table outside the door of this room. There will also be a referendum question on all Wisconsin ballots. Like the referendum questions presented last year, this again seeks to disenfranchise voters by placing voting limits into the state constitution instead of allowing bipartisan discussions to pass policies, although Wisconsin's photo voter ID law is among the most restrictive in the nation. The League of Wisconsin encourages voters to vote "no" on this question. So, on with the show tonight. Public questions were solicited in advance. Those of you in the audience may also submit questions on the cards provided. If you haven't yet and you just wave them in the air and a League member will come around and pick them up from you. Questions must be for all candidates and may not single out a candidate. Questions may be edited for brevity and clarity, and while we hope to cover as many as we can, we may not have time for all. Each candidate will have the same amount of time for each question. Tonight, we will first hear from City Council candidates Jeffrey Linsky and Frank Cuthbert, who are running for District 3. Flo Bruno is unopposed for District 1, and incumbent Dan Steiner is unopposed for District 2. Candidates, please keep your answers concise so we may cover as many issues as possible. Our timekeeper, who I know you've met, will give you cues, and please heed the stop sign. If she doesn't stop you, I will. Concise answers will allow time for more questions. This is not a debate. You will each be given the same amount of time for each question. You will now each have two minutes to summarize your background, qualifications, and your motivation for seeking a seat on the Common Council. Why should voters choose you over your opponent? And going alphabetically, Frank, we'll start with you.
Okay, thank you. First, I would like to thank the League of Women Voters, the mayor, the city council, and everyone here in the audience for supporting this forum. My name is Frank Cuthbert, and I'm a candidate for the City of Nina's District 3 alderman position. A little bit about me personally, I am married to my wonderful wife, Moi. We have three grown kids, all pursuing their own careers. I am a U.S. Navy veteran, obtained a Bachelor of Science degree from Southern Illinois University in industrial technology. I am retired now after working for over 40 years in the aviation industry. I held positions as operations manager, project engineer, program manager, and sales executive. Since moving to Nina a few years ago, I have been very active with the city, working at the library, volunteering at events like the Powwow canoe ride, Winterfest, and with the Carpenter Preserve. I led a task force for the Park and Recreation Department to develop a standard for the QR codes for the Oak Hill Cemetery Military Memorials. The experience of working with the city's leaders and attending the various cities' committees and council meetings has given me the knowledge and the connections to have a good relationship already. If elected to represent the citizens of Nina as one of your aldermen, I will be prepared and effective on day one. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff?
Good evening. Again, first off, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for holding this forum, and thanks to the city and the mayor for hosting the event in the city hall, and thanks again for all who are attending tonight. At least the weather's a bit better tonight. My name is Jeffrey Linsky. I'm currently running to fill the position of alderperson in District 3, replacing Lee Helstrom, who did not seek reelection this spring. Again, Lee has served this community for over 16 years. Again, yes, some big shoes to fill. And again, thank you, Lee, for your dedicated service for the past years. I know you're going to continue with things, and you're not just leaving, so, thank you. I, along with my wife of 40 years, have been, only been in Nina residence for the past 11 years, and I have watched as the city has grown and changed into a great community and proud to call home. I am committed to this community. Not only do I live in the community, but I also firmly believe it is my civic duty to be an active member of my community. I am excited for the opportunity, if elected, to fill this position. While I have not held any elected public offices before, I do have experience serving in various leadership roles by serving in the U.S. Air Force for over 24 years and as an aircraft maintenance manager in the aerospace industry for the past 14 years. During this time, I have managed multimillion-dollar budgets and worked with individuals from diverse backgrounds. While I'm not a lifelong resident of Nina, I got here as fast as I could. If elected, I will be able to provide unique perspective to the Common Council and the City of Nina based on living in different communities during my 24-year Air Force career. Serving to my community, like I said, has always been a passion of mine. If elected, I will always conduct myself in professional manner, attend and participate in council meetings, serve on city committees as appointed, and be an active and equal participant, be available at all times. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Jeff?
I'll get to know you as we go on, I promise. Now, we'll ask public policy questions that were either submitted in advance or by the public tonight at the forum. You will have one and a half minutes for each question unless we tell you something different. And Karen has the first question for you.
All right, gentlemen, we're going to start out with a softball. In any organization, including city government, communication is always a challenge. Communication and gaining feedback from city residents before decisions are made is very important. How, and please be specific, do you plan to proactively communicate and hear feedback from District 3 residents? And we will start with Frank.
Okay, yes, communication is extremely important. It's vital for an alderman to initially get the word out, go to the meetings, understand what is being proposed, streets, sidewalks, changes in parks, things like that. It's important to have your constituents know as much information about what the city wants to do as possible, and then get their feedback, and bring that feedback back to the committees, back to the council, and, again, talk to your neighbors, talk to your friends, and get their input. As an alderman, you're representing your district, so you need to communicate both back to the council and back to the constituents as well, so, very important.
Thank you. Jeff?
Well, communication, like I said, is very important. I can ask any one of us who is married for over 40-some years. If you ask my wife, she says I don't listen to her, but, you know, I do. But communication, very important. As this day and age now, I mean, everything we do, I mean, you can't make a peep without someone hearing it or communicating on Facebook or doing anything. I guess I would use, I'd have to say, use all our tools we have to communicate. You know, because we all have cell phones now, so we're available, you know, 24/7. I would hope no one would call at 11 at night, but if the crisis would need it, that certainly would answer the call. Just, again, just, social media is a big player, and now we all have cell phones and we're all available.
Thank you. Okay, my turn. This time, I'll start with you, Jeff. Nina has had two homicides in the last six months. The Nina News reported the number of police officers in Nina remains largely unchanged since 1982, while the number of police calls have more than tripled from 1982. What express actions are you going to do to drive, what express actions are you going to drive to ensure Nina is a safe community and the appropriate and necessary dollars are invested in our safety?
Well, it wouldn't just be me. It'd have to be a council, you know, we'd have to get together with the council and the mayor and different agencies, and I guess we'd want to hire more police officers. I think we're just like any other city where there's a shortfall, not only in budget and manpower, you know, getting qualified applicants that want to stay. It seems like we're always running for the dollar to chase it down the road somewhere that pays higher. So, we'd have to work with, you know, the different departments to hire and keep our police officers we would have.
Okay, thank you. Frank?
Okay, thank you. Yes, the levels that the police force currently have in Nina, they have been replacing retiring officers, but that just keeps the level at the same number. Speaking with Chief Olson, he's also limited by the current city budget and how much we can afford to increase the police budget. So, it is a challenge. They have been diligently working on stepping up patrols and having a greater presence in the community. If I'm elected as an alderman, I will completely support the chief and see if we could get a little more money for the police force to get some more officers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to come back to you, Frank.
Okay.
So, this has been well-covered in the community as well, the Shattuck School property. Not much is happening there. So, what can the city do to get this project moving along versus sitting there empty?
The Shattuck property has now been purchased by a private individual, and that individual is not really doing very much with the property. The city can approach the individual and see if there is something that we could do for that facility. There was a lot of activity about three years ago. There were a lot of plans that were put together, and since the initial sort of activity has sort of died down, it's rather difficult to get the current owner to come back.
Thank you. Jeff? Same question.
Yeah, well, again, like I said, it's privately-owned property now, so, I mean, we'd have to get together, again, with the city, aldermen, alderpersons, and the mayor, and get, look at what our options are, is what we can enforce, what they can't enforce.
Thank you. Okay, I'm coming back to you, Jeff. Are there any thoughts of having a real senior center in Oshkosh, in Nina? I'm sorry. Guess which community I'm from.
I would be for it. I mean, we just would have to figure out how to fund it and how to create the space for it. I mean, I think our seniors need a place to live and it's more built for the seniors. I would really, I would definitely support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank?
So, yesterday on the news, there's a company called Evergreen, which just purchased the KC headquarters just off on Lake Street, and they are planning to create a 55-plus community there. It wasn't really specific as to exactly what they were going to do, other than they said that they were going to have facilities for activities. They didn't say how many people were going to be living there, but that was exciting news. So, that building's been sitting vacant for a while, and it's good to have a good use for it. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, I'm going to come back to you at this time as well, Frank. So, what do you see as the top priorities on Nina's strategic plan, and how would you help see that those priorities get addressed and completed?
Strategic plan, as far as capital investments and some of the look-forward projects that the city is planning on doing, they need to go through, first of all, they need to go through the committees first, get the input from the community, then we take that information back. So, it's sort of a, it's a back-and-forth communication between what the committee would like to do, what the city council would like to do, and then taking it back to what the residents would like to see.
Thank you, Frank. Jeff? And anytime you need us to repeat the question, if you go second, just let us know.
Right, could you repeat the question?
Sure. What do you see as top priorities on Nina's strategic plan, and how would you help see those priorities, how would you see that these priorities get addressed?
Right, I guess number one for me would be a parking garage somewhere downtown. I mean, as we all try to support our downtown, we do find it is kind of hard to park down there. I mean, on Saturdays at the farmer's market or just going out to dinner on a Saturday night. I mean, but, to me, seeing a small town like Nina here have the downtown it has is very, I think it's very appealing to everybody, and it's a great place to go down on a Friday or Saturday night. I do enjoy the, look forward every year to the, I'm sorry, the December, where they blocked through, I can't remember what it's called, where you walk around and get on the mannequins, the mannequins down there, which is neat, but parking seems to be the problem. I'd say parking, parks, and the general traffic in Nina.
Thank you. There's been a lot of discussion at the park and rec leader level, not necessarily at the neighborhood level, about changes to Carpenter Preserve within District 3. What are your thoughts on the changes and the dollars to be spent on the project? And we'll start with you, Jeff.
All right, that's a near and dear project to my heart, because, I mean, I live in that neighborhood there, so it's right behind, right out my back door almost. I do have grandchildren that like to come up and visit, and they do enjoy riding their bikes, pedaling through there, hiking, walking, but it'd be nice to see it develop more, and I think there is plans to develop it with, along with funding. I think they have started out there with clearing some of the woodland and making it a bit safer with all the dead trees, but it's, we'd like to continue seeing that go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank?
Okay, like Jeff, the Carpenter Preserve is my backyard, so I am very interested in the Carpenter Preserve. It has been sort of two camps. One camp wants to leave the Carpenter Preserve exactly the way it is, the other wants to turn it into a more open area with additional pathways and bridges and a lot of development in it. So, I'm sort of caught somewhere in between. I would like to see the vegetation and the dead trees and the pathways cleaned up, and I actually have been talking with Director Kating quite a bit about it. I'm involved in a lot of the meetings that go on with the Carpenter Preserve and have been in charge of a lot of the volunteering as far as clearing out the existing foliage and maintaining the trails. So, I think it is a viable project. There is funding for it in the current budget, and there's going to be budgeting for it for the next couple of years. It's about a five-year plan for the Carpenter Preserve to get it to where we can have a nice park. There's a lot more that we need to, it's probably going to take more than 15 seconds for me, so I'll stop.
Thank you, Frank.
Okay, well, I'm going to come back to you. The city provided some interesting information with our property tax bill in December. They reported a breakout of the spending of our property taxes, 53% on public safety, 16% on parks and rec, 16% on public works, and about 15% on all other. Where would you like to see spending increased, and then correspondingly, where would you reduce spending?
That is, well, first of all, I attended the budgeting meeting here in November, and balancing the budget, the city budget, is an extremely difficult balancing act. Everybody, every department has limitations financially. There are some things that I still support that are in the budget. One of them is Arrowhead Park. That's a big upcoming project, so I would like to see that continue as, along with the other parks. I would have to look very hard at the budget to see if there was anything that could be removed. Everybody is really straining to continue and keep up the services that this city needs and deserves, so that would be a tough one, so, thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Jeff?
Repeat the question again?
Sure. The city provided some interesting information with our property tax bill in December. They reported a breakout of the spending of our property taxes, 53% on public safety, 16% on parks and recreation, 16% on public works, and about 15% on all other. Where would you like to see spending increased, and then correspondingly, where would you reduce spending?
That's a hot topic there.
Just a little bit.
I mean, personally, I think we, just like all of us, we'd like to see our property taxes go down, but thinking realistically, we know it's not going to happen, but we can, again, as we said, the budget is a hard thing to come up with and to, you know, even out the pot of money to try to support all, everything you want to support. A lot, I guess, you know, I'd like to see for the parks, you know, and a lot of it would be, you know, remain with public safety. I mean, I think safety of all the needed residents is very important, along with fire, and again, like police. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, this question's for you first, Jeff. With the national abandonment of DEI initiatives, what will you support to ensure that the marginalized and disenfranchised among us get a fair shake in our community and schools?
I would have to just refer, kind of go back to what we would decide as a city. I wouldn't really share, you know, it'd be a voted thing, not what my own personal view of it would be. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Frank?
I would have to say that the city actually, at least from my view, represents and really tries to represent all different nationalities, ethnic groups, different, we have a ton of different programs for the various groups to be recognized. The Powwow was an awesome show of the history of Nina and the original inhabitants of this area. So, I think that, that being said, the community and being the alderman with attachments to the city council and not so much the schools, I would be definitely in favor of establishing events that would honor or represent all the various different groups out there. That's where I would go with that.
Okay, thank you.
And guess what? You're up again, Frank.
All right.
All right, here we go. District 3 is a rapidly developing part of the city. What do you see as the greatest challenges and opportunities in that growth?
So, District 3 is, yes, it's a very large district. One of the biggest challenges that I see, honestly, is that there's only one way that residentially that it can grow, which is towards the south and towards the west, and with sort of boundary agreements with the other towns and villages in that area, there's only a limited amount of land that the city can actually acquire. We have the same problem industrially down the I-41 corridor, just south of Highway G, where, again, we're running out of real estate that the city can actually acquire. So, that is probably one of the biggest challenges for this city. We certainly are growing, and we're building. If anyone's seen Freedom Acres in the last year, it's a tremendous amount of growth in that area. So, that would be, as far as challenges, the biggest challenge that I see for this city.
Thank you. Jeff? Same question.
You have to have rapid growth. Yes, District 3 is growing exponentially, as Frank said. I mean, if you go past the Freedom Acres, I mean, it's, I think a new house pops up every day. Along with that, with the rapid growth, challenges are going to become, you know, it creates more income for the city, and then, you know, with taxes, you know, we got utilities, public works, police protection, fire. So, I think it does, as we grow, and expenses get higher. So, I think that's just, have to watch our growth and, you know, watch the growth as far as we can get out. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, this one goes to you first, Jeff. Timekeeper, we are going to allow only one minute for this question. If not elected, how will you serve your neighborhood and city? How will you be involved?
I mean, look, Nina's a great place to live. I mean, I would still support, you know, coming out to whatever needed, you know, with Carpenter Preserve and doing different things around the city, and helping out where we can, and supporting our different businesses here in the city. Thank you.
Thanks. Frank?
Yes, so, I would, I would still do my volunteering. I still really enjoy going out there and volunteering for the various events. I'm still going to show up to all your committee meetings, and there's also, I just discovered it, that there's a form that, as a civilian, you can request that the mayor put you on a council. So, I would ask if I could join certain councils as a civilian member of the Nina population. So, that's what I would do. I will stay active in this city.
Thank you. Karen, I think that you can do our last question.
The last question, okay. So, there has been a lot of talk around Winnebago County about a half percent county tax. We're the, I believe, the only county left in the state of Wisconsin that does not have a county tax. Would you be in favor of that, or not, and why?
Except for me?
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Honestly, I have to say that I was not aware of that. As I'm just finding out, I would first have to inquire as to what the county would provide for the City of Nina for that half percent sales tax, and that would be my first question. And then, I would have to dig a little deeper and find out, okay, so, is that every resident? Is that businesses? What, so, there's a lot that I would have to find out about that, so.
Thank you.
I just dropped the mic. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you for covering for me. And Jeff? Same question.
Yes, as, I'd have to agree with Frank on that. We'd have to find out a lot more information on, you know, where it's coming from, what it would go to, and how we could kind of divide it up and use it for different departments or townships or cities and communities.
Thank you.
Okay, well, now I will give you each one additional minute to say whatever you would like, and we will start with, we started with Frank before. We'll start with you, Jeff, for this one.
All right, again, I would just like to say again, thanks for the League of Women Voters for putting this together, and the City of Nina for hosting here in the city hall. And then, like I said, Nina's a place, a great place to live, great people, a place where people want to live and raise their children, and I am committed to investing in future Nina that works for all Nina residents. I would like to give some of that to my community and believe that the best way to improve our community is to get involved in it and be that special person who puts the City of Nina budget first and represents District 3 as a priority. Thank you.
Frank?
Okay, again, thank you, everybody who's here. Talking to the current alderman of the city council, I see how important it is to be accessible to the residents of the city. Listening and providing good information is critical to having good relations with everyone in the district. Having upfront discussions with neighbors, again, about street repairs, changes in traffic signals, changes in parks. changes in traffic signals, changes in parks in advance, gives everyone time to ask questions and get answers instead of being surprised. I will bring honest and open discussions to any issue that I receive. Not everyone has the same idea for what is best for our community, but clear and factual decisions must be made, and I am willing to do it. I am ready to start working with the residents of Nina to keep Nina as safe, friendly, and profitable a community as possible. Thank you all for coming tonight, and I look forward to representing you. Just made it. Thank you.
Good timing, Frank. I want to thank both of you for participating tonight, too. We greatly appreciate that. Without candidates, we can't have forums, so we appreciate that you were willing to show up tonight. This does conclude the forum for Nina City Council. On Tuesday, April 1st, you may vote for one of these candidates. Please remember to vote. Democracy depends on you. Hello, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to this forum that the League of Women Voters is putting on with the Nina Joint School District. I'm Margie Davy. I'm president of the League of Women Voters of Winnebago County. Tonight I have with me Karen Schneider, who is the publisher for the Oshkosh Herald, the Nina News, and the Winnicottine News. Tonight, we will now hear from the candidates for the Nina Joint School District Board of Education. We have incumbents Lori Asbury and Tara Brzezinski. And we have opponents Eric Fredrickson, Tom Danby, Hanby, I'm sorry, Tom, and Kenneth McNeil. They are running for three seats on the board. Candidates, please keep your answers concise so we may cover as many issues as possible. We've got lots of questions here for you, and there are five of you, so it'll take a while. Our timekeeper will give you cues, so please heed the stop sign so that she doesn't have to cut you off. If she does it, I would. Concise answers will allow time for more questions. This is not a debate. You will each be given the same amount of time for each question. So now we're going to give you each two minutes to summarize your background, qualifications, and your motivation for seeking a seat on the school board. Why should voters choose you over your opponents? And we will go alphabetically with this, so we'll start with you, Lori.
Okay, thank you so much. First, I want to thank the League of Women Voters and the city for hosting this event and for all of you, of course, being here and being engaged. That's really great. I just have been honored to serve on the Nina School Board for, since 2016. I'm a parent of two Nina grads. I'm a longtime Nina resident and volunteer. And community service and lifelong learning make me a really good, an asset for the Nina School Board. My interest began with our kids attending the Nina Schools, and I wanted to help make NJSD the best it could be for all of our kids. I volunteered at the Library Reading Program. I was in the PTO. I was on the Budget Oversight Committee, and I also was on the Chess and Curbage Club for students. I've served on nonprofit boards supporting mental health and literacy as well as volunteer organizations like the Nina Menasha Emergency Society, preventing homelessness. I've also worked in advertising and policy advocacy and have brought advocacy work to the board by establishing the Legislative Committee. I also serve on the WASBE Board, which is Wisconsin Association of School Boards, sorry. It's their Policy and Resolutions Committee. And I also am serving on the Wisconsin Special Education Council. I recently have attended budget listening sessions and legislative breakfasts at CISA 6 to talk with our state legislators about all the issues facing Nina schools in our community. I'm a lifelong learner. I recently committed, completed my Master of Public Affairs degree at La Follette. And during my time on the board, we've had balanced budgets, used our taxpayer dollars responsibly. We also worked with the community to hire a new superintendent, new, brand-new, beautiful high school. Is that my time? Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lori. Tara?
Good evening, and thank you so much for having us here for this event. My name is Tara Brzezinski, and I'm honored to be here today. I'm a proud mother of three children, one son and two daughters, all of whom are students within the district. My son has special needs, which has given me a deeper understanding of the challenges, importance of advocating for all children, especially those with disabilities. In addition to being a parent, I'm actively involved in serving in our community as a child-parent advocate. I currently sit on the Board of People with Developmental Disabilities, where I work alongside other advocates to ensure the needs of children and adults with developmental disabilities are heard and met at the state level. Locally, I serve as a special education coordinator at my church, where I help provide support to children with special needs. I also mentor a variety of students with, throughout the district, helping them navigate their educational journeys. One of my greatest joys is volunteering in the classroom, where I assist students during work time and helping them with reading. Through all of this experience, I've had the privilege of seeing firsthand the power of education and community support. And I'm committed to continuing to make a positive impact wherever I can. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Eric, your turn.
My name is Eric Fredrickson. I am a candidate for the Nina Joint School District Board of Education. I am a father to two young sons. One attends elementary school in the district, and the other will attend when he's old enough. I have built my career as a quality engineer. My family is active in the Nina community and has volunteered in the Northeast Wisconsin Chinese Association for about a decade. I'm running for school board because I believe I have something to contribute. As a quality engineer, I see things around me in terms of processes and how to optimize them to get the best result. I am process-focused and detail-driven in my work. I want to ensure that the school board remains nonpartisan and that students are the focus of the work that we do. Over the last couple of months, as part of my campaign, I have met with many members of our community and the school district, including parents, educators, and school principals. The more I hear, the more I believe that we have great schools and great educators who care deeply about the work that they do. We have challenges, and there are always opportunities for improvement. But we have the opportunity to build on what is already good. And that is what I intend to do if elected to the Nina Joint School District Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom?
Good evening. I'm Tom Hanby. Of course, a citizen of Nina, and my son used the Nina School District, all from kindergarten. He's now 26. And when he started kindergarten is when I took an interest in what was going on in our school system. At that point in time, the whole process was baffling or different to me, and I swore I wasn't going to let it be that way. So now, essentially, for the last 21 years, I've nearly missed a school board meeting. I attended occasional policy meeting. And basically, I swore to myself I'd become better informed than I have, and I've become deeply interested in our district. I've served on the board once to fill a vacancy and once for an elected position. Regardless if I get elected or not, I go to the meetings, attempt to hold our district accountable for making the best decisions and doing the most important work. If I get elected, that's great. If I don't, then I still attend the meetings, I'm still interested and want to be a participant in what goes on. So my son has now graduated from high school quite a while ago. And as it would turn out, we are now old people with children, so we're raising a five-year-old. So we currently, this year, have a 4K granddaughter who we take care of every day. So while I thought I was an, from the outside looking into our district, I now find myself at the very bottom of it, starting to build again on the process I've made. So I'm still interested in serving our community. I think I have a good track record of, or a historical perspective of what we've done and why we've done it. And I'm certainly willing to ask the hard questions and expect answers from people, whether that interests them or not, as our public needs to be completely, have their voice heard in all the processes, not just when they're upset after the fact. Thank you all for coming, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Tom. Ken?
Thank you. My name is Kenneth McNeil, Sr. I've got two children that attend Alliance. My daughter's in third grade, my son is in first grade. And first, I'd like to thank the League for this forum and thank all of you for being here, supporting democracy, and through your taxes, supporting the Nina Joint School District. I think that's really important. We're really blessed to have the Nina Joint School District and the services it provides. I am originally from Texas. I moved to Wisconsin to join Air Wisconsin about two and a half years ago. And it was like a breath of fresh air coming from Texas. The education system is quite a bit different down there. I've got 17 years of professional experience in aviation and manufacturing. I've got an IT background, so I bring communications, project management, vendor management, contract management, and leadership to the Nina Joint School District Board. And one of the things that really is impactful for me, just like Lori said, I'm also a lifelong learner. I actually was fortunate enough to attend a school district that had dual concurrent enrollment, like Nina does. And I graduated with an associate's degrees three weeks before I graduated high school. I just finished my master's degree in Management Information Systems in December. And I'm currently working on Autism Spectrum Disorder Teaching Certification from Fox Valley. I think with my background, my unique life skills, and my fresh perspective, I could bring a lot of energy and a lot of positive change to the Nina School Board.
Thank you. Karen, would you like to take the first question?
I will, and I always start with a softball, so we'll start with you, Tara. What is the best way to retain excellent teaching and office staff?
I would say the best way to obtain the staff and teachers is to really listen to them. That's the most important part, is to really listen to them, listen to what their needs are, because they're the backbone of your district. We need to make sure that, you know, we're supporting our teachers as well because of the ones that are teaching our students. A lot of times, they aren't there for the money, because teachers don't make a lot of money. And they're not there for that. They're there for the students. And so retaining them is to make sure that if they need help, that we're finding a way to get them that help. That we are making sure that if they need additional staff or they need additional aides in there, that we're trying to figure out a way to help them with that.
Thank you, Tara. Eric?
Yes, I believe one of the best ways to retain staff would certainly be to involve our educators more in many of the policies that the board writes and adopts. I know right now, perhaps, there isn't enough involvement, but I believe there is interest there to get more input from our educators. And that certainly goes into the point of listening to them more. I think there are opportunities for more flexible policies with educators. Perhaps use of PTO could be different, more flexible, to make things a little bit easier for them. Salary is always another issue. They certainly work very hard for the salaries that they make. I know currently, salaries and benefits are 72% of the budget for our district. So it's challenging to find more room for salaries, but it needs to be a priority. I know this year, we're able to offer the teachers a 3% raise, which is, a 3% raise, which is just a hair more than inflation. But I would certainly be looking for opportunities to improve that whenever possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Tom?
Yeah, the one thing I think that the district has made, had some struggles with over the past decades that I've been involved is there's an enormous difference between listening and hearing. We can run listening sessions till we're blue in the face, but we have to hear our groups of people, whether we're talking about our staff in this question or our parents or our students. We have to not only listen to them, we have to hear them. And we have to, when possible, involve their thoughts and feelings into our conversations that we have as we choose their workplace, their school place, et cetera. And I think, again, our educators that we have are wonderful. That's it. They're in this because they love to do it, and that's a very thankful position for us to be in. You know, it's not hire 500 people and see what they do. We have 500 passionate people. And so what's probably available to them, of course, fringe benefits and pay are essentially the same. What do you get out of it at the end? We, what we really need to do is create an atmosphere where they feel supported and they feel they have some autonomy over what goes on in their world. That's what allows them to be passionate, do the things that they do, and be highly successful at it. So again, I think it's not just listening, it's hearing them and then responding more practical to their needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Kenneth?
So I would say that in my time observing the Nina School District, I've seen a lot of positive change with Dr. Harrison and the way that he's approaching the staff. I think that he's on the right track. Definitely, like Eric mentioned, a 3% raise is helpful to anyone when they're trying to pay bills and trying to make ends meet. I think one of the things that we could also do is encourage additional opportunities. I know that one of the concerns we have is finding enough qualified teachers to support cap courses. Incentivizing that would be a great way to encourage teachers to stick around, as well as allowing them to go to conferences. I agree that a flexible PTO would be a good way to approach that. But at the end of the day, they have to feel respected. They have to feel like the professionals that they are. And it's up to us as a board to ensure that that comes across through our communications, through our actions, and through the engagement that we have with them.
Thank you. Lori?
I agree with everything everyone said already. Our staff are the most important part of what we do at the district and what we can deliver. I would work to create an inclusive, open culture and a supportive environment. I think that's huge, and we are working on that. The most important thing would be to involve teachers in the decision-making. We're going to be going through some big changes with literacy right now. And having them be part of what is done and how it's implemented is going to be key. Listen, advocate for the budget, to be able to do more at the state level for salaries and being competitive. Professional learning days, they need to be more efficient and appropriate, applicable. Offer professional development to get those advanced degrees support for that, as well as really focusing on communication and transparency. Our new superintendent is, we're really working hard on that. And we're very excited to be able to have, really to advocate also to lift up the profession for, you know, the respected professionals that they are and to tell the story of how important public education is. Those are basically the things. Thank you.
Well, since a couple of you have already mentioned this, I'm going to move on to this question, which will go to you first, Eric. Dr. Harrison is new to the district this year. Which change that he has made impressed you the most, and which area would you like to work with him on in the future if you're elected?
Sure. One thing that I've noticed that he's really made an effort to do is to hear more from the community. I know in the past, communication has been one of the top issues that I've heard from parents. They felt like they didn't hear enough from the district and they didn't get enough opportunities to speak directly to the district as well or the superintendent. And Dr. Harrison has certainly gone out of his way to have listening sessions, both when he was first hired but also more recently about the district strategic plan. And I think that's been very welcomed by the community, and they've had good turnout. I've had the opportunity to attend several of those, and there's been great feedback from that, from different members of the community, be it parents, be it former parents or retired educators, great feedback. Something that I'm looking forward to working with him the most, I think there's a lot of opportunity with internal report cards. We've all seen the district report cards, and that information is important. But I think we could collect data internal to our district in a more timely manner and respond to it quicker. That would lead to better outcomes with our students. I think the data's there, and I think a bit of analysis would really help our students and direct what we're doing. and direct what we're doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tom?
Would you please repeat?
I would be happy to repeat. Dr. Harrison is new to the district this year. Which change that he has made impressed you the most, and which area would you like to work with him on in the future if elected?
Yes, Dr. Harrison is new. The good news is he came to us with an awful lot of accolades behind him already. He's performed basically a comparable task in another district for quite a while, and he's been involved. You know, this isn't like a new teacher fresh off the bus. We're fortunate that we were able to take a field of good candidates and narrow it down to the last one standing. So that said, I like to downplay the fact that Dr. Harrison is new. The fact remains is, what I've seen thus far, an improvement on is an openness towards open communication, transparency, you know, and laying the cards on the table and letting people see it like it is, and then additionally, letting them have a say as we go along, or an input at least. And primarily, that's the goal that I've been trying to achieve, honestly, for the last two decades, to make our district more transparent, more open. You know, at times, we have big businesses like this, and we claim to be open, and, but there's a difference between open and making it accessible to people than there is saying, well, everything's available, all you have to do is search for it, we're not hiding it. And I like to believe what I've seen thus far, we are making strides in that direction, that we are being more open, transparent, and sharing with community along the way. So I'm hopeful, that's the same thing I do want to achieve, I'm hopeful that we'll create that as a culture and not just a happenstance.
Thank you, Tom. Kenneth?
So unfortunately, Dr. Underly at the state level has devalued the district report card with her changes, and I think that one of the things that was brought up at the most recent school board meeting that I really agree with, that Dr. Harrison was advocating for, is removing compensation and bonuses based on that report card, since it's now a flawed measure, and it's also a lagging indicator. So I think that is a great improvement, and also, I was fortunate enough to attend one of the community engagement sessions. Another great improvement, continued involvement of the community. I think overall, the changes that he's making with the staff and the way he's changing the culture is the most important thing he's brought to us so far, and I would want to continue to work with him on the culture improvement.
Okay, thank you. Lori?
I also agree with what everyone has said so far. I think our two main goals with Dr. Harrison have been the way he's engaging the community and with our staff in developing this positive culture. For staff, he's involving them in the decision-making in a way that is really going to help. We've gone through a lot of change, and I think he's really the right person for the job right now. He's bringing a lot to the table. For the community, it's more engagement and also involvement in our strategic plan. What do we want our graduates to look like? Developing our community partnerships, this local report card, that's more accurate data. And improving our relationship with the city, I think, is really going to be important. Communication and transparency are also key goals for him, and I would love to work with him more on engaging the community and our staff. I think there's a lot that we could be doing in developing, further developing our community partnerships, but I really appreciate the positive changes that he has made so far.
Thank you. Tara?
Yep, so a lot of what everyone has said, but I kind of want to break that down a little bit more. Dr. Harrison has done a wonderful job at just wrapping everyone in, so to the newspaper article that he writes, it's a way to show transparency and what the school is working on, but it's more than that. You know, he does the listening sessions, he goes to every school and meets with all of the staff, he meets with all of the administration there, he also meets with at the admin office. But a way that he's doing that is he's building up the foundation, so he knows that there was a different leadership that was there, he's kind of wiping the slate and building the foundation up to learn what all of their concerns were, and to really listen to them, and to make changes that are positive. One thing that I would love to work with him on is actually the literacy. We have Act 20 that's coming in, and just really working with him to make sure that we have the data that we're collecting for that, make sure that the staff that actually works in the literacy department is actually involved with that data, and that their voices are heard to better correct what we're using. There's a lot of times where they're, on different schools, they're using different programming, and it would be nice to have their input so that we're using one consistent programming for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tara.
All right, so this question, we are going to start with you, Tom. With the national abandonment of DEI initiatives, what will you do to, what will you support, excuse me, let me start over. With the national abandonment of DEI initiatives, what will you support to ensure that the marginalized and disenfranchised among us get a fair shake in our community and schools?
Okay, as a school board, obviously, we are pretty well limited to operate within the scope of the schools, so of course, hopefully what we do in our schools spills out into the community, that's the nature of education, that you help people acknowledge what goes on around them, learn from it, and then carry forth and conduct that on an everyday basis. The district as a whole had supported most of these initiatives to begin with, prior to them becoming laws or mandates, you know, in the last few years. I think our district has made a good effort, always room for improvement, but has made a very good effort at inclusiveness and adapting to an ever-changing landscape on, you know, basically on a dime in many cases. So I would support that we go forward, basically, and we operate as a public entity with compassion for all parties involved, and look where essentially our weak spots are, and make every effort that we can to correct it, so that every student who goes forth from our district has an opportunity to be their maximum when they go out into the community. That serves not only our schools and our staff well, that serves our students, our family, and our greater community within the city and outside. Thank you.
Thank you. Kenneth?
So one of the things that I find really unique about the Nina Joint School District is just how large it actually is. I mean, we've got the Village of Fox Crossing, we've got the City of Nina, the Town of Nina, the Town of Inland, and we've also got the Town and Village of Clayton as part of our catchment area, and that is a diverse population. It's a lot of different needs through all those communities, and as the board, you know, we have to represent all of those different needs, all of those different points of view. Every kid that comes to the school deserves safety. It's impossible to learn if you don't feel safe, and we also need to make sure that everyone gets the same opportunities presented to them, and it's up to the student to seize those opportunities. So I know that recently, the policy committee has been looking at the difference between the 2020 requirements versus the present requirements, and like Tom said, you know, we have to follow the guidance that's available from the feds, we also have to follow the guidance from WASB, and I think ultimately, that the board just needs to do right by the students as best they can within the limits given to them.
Thank you, Kenneth. Lori?
Yes, I agree. The most important thing that we can do is to continue to provide a safe and inclusive environment, and we work on that every day. It's not going to matter whether those labels are gone, the DEI labels. Our staff and our, all of our instructors are going to make a commitment to do their very best for kids every single day. We will continue to invest in mental health, in anti-bullying, and anti, or well, de-escalation programs, looking at adverse childhood experiences, also focusing on our English language learners and with the rising poverty that we've got. We also will continue to focus on that and making sure all our students have the supports and the respect that they deserve, while also being compassionate in teaching those things to our kids with a diverse experience with the number of kids, you know, that he had mentioned down there about coming from many different areas and many different backgrounds. We'll continue to work to support our kids.
Thank you, Lori. Tara?
Could you read the question again for me, please?
Sure. With the national abandonment of DEI initiatives, what will you support to ensure that the marginalized and disenfranchised among us get a fair shake in our community and schools?
Okay. Yeah, I think as a whole, everything is changing, because as a school, we're forced to follow by those federal mandates. We are forced that if we don't follow them, we'll lose federal funding. So does that mean that what we practice as a district will change? No. We do have amazing staff, we have amazing leader within our district, and they always are making sure that our students are provided a safe and inclusive environment. We also make sure that we are including diversity in there. There are many schools that actually practice, and the board supports, you know, that they have a different day that celebrates for among, and that's really great to see, that different schools are showing the different diversities and different cultures that surround us. And I don't think that those things are going to change, because that's what makes up Nina as a whole, is that we are accepting of everybody, and we're making sure that, you know, we're providing those safe environments for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Tara. Eric?
I believe that it is an absolute right that every child have access to a high-quality public education regardless of race or ability. And as a district, we need to ensure equal access to education and services for all students. I think we do a pretty good job of this today, but there's always opportunities for improvement as well. I think we should still look to promote cultural awareness. There's certainly been improvements on this in recent years. I know a lot of the elementary schools celebrated Chinese New Year this year, and my wife helped facilitate it at our son's elementary school as well. But there's a lot of other cultures represented in our schools besides just the Chinese culture that we certainly could add or incorporate and promote more as well. And this certainly does not violate in any way the repeal or change of DEI initiatives. So I believe there's more we can do to promote cultural awareness, and certainly anti-bullying is going to be a big part of that as well. We have policies on the books, they need to be enforced, reporting needs to be made aware, or everyone needs to be made aware of our reporting policies as well. But overall, I think there's a lot we can do even with this new policy in place, the federal policy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next question, and this one will go to you first, Kenneth. Should the Board of Education play any part in determining which books are selected for school libraries and classrooms? And if they do, how would you ensure a balanced approach to the school libraries?
Sure, so absolutely, the board has a role to play in determining the appropriateness of educational material. It's spelled out very clearly in the existing policies. The policy gives parents the right to inspect education materials, it gives them a clear procedure to challenge those materials at the building level and then at the district level. And ultimately, the board is made up of nine diverse people and opinions, and the majority will rule on that, and whatever that decision is, stands until the board is up for reelection. So that policy not only seems fair, but it seems transparent, and ultimately, if the board makes a decision that the community does not like, the community has the option to change the board over, so I see no problem with the current procedure or the way it's handled.
Thank you. Lori?
I feel like we have a very transparent and fair process for the materials that parents may have either a question about or would care to challenge. The procedure is that they would file that, and it would go through administration. The board itself makes the policies, but they do not select the materials. We also have very strong internal expertise and procedures that we follow when picking and selecting our materials. We want to make sure that we can have really great materials for our students to have access to. If parents are concerned about that or have a question, we have an open door policy and a very straightforward procedure. If something is challenged, it would go through a review by our staff and administration, and then if that solution, a recommendation would be made to the board, and the board would take a look. And as Kenneth said, there's nine board members, and we would basically vote if it came to that. I personally am not in favor of banning books, and I have a lot of respect for our staff experts that select our materials, so thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Tara?
Yep, I do agree that the current policy that we have is efficient. We have had several occasions where we've had to follow those policies that we have. The board creates the policies that are out there, which we enforce. There also is a group of educators that review the material. They have, they have a very list that they follow of all the criteria that they have, and that's what goes up into the library. If someone has a complaint with that, then they go back, they review it. If someone still does not feel that that was an adequate answer, then it would come to the board for us to review. Us, you know, there's nine of us that have to review that, we can ask questions, we can find out why a decision was made and it wasn't made. There are some books that are actually in the library that are kept behind the shelf, behind the desk, and those are kept because that committee felt that with that book, it needed to stay behind the desk. So I do think that we do, it is our job as a board to listen and trust that committee in what they do. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric?
Can you repeat the question, please?
I sure can. The question was, should the Board of Education play any part in determining which books are selected for school libraries and classrooms, and how would you ensure a balanced approach to school libraries?
Thank you. I don't think the board should ever vote to remove books from our libraries. I think that's a working-level decision that's best left to the building administrators and the district administrators. We have very talented and experienced librarians in our district who select the materials in our libraries, and I think they're doing a very good job. It is the role of the board to set policies as to what materials are in our schools, including our libraries. So to that extent, I support the board's responsibility to writing those policies and approving those policies with input from our educators, including our librarians. And I think our policies have worked very well to date, I think they're being followed, and I think they work for our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom?
Hi, well, all my counterparts have given a great explanation of how our system works, that's quite accurate. So there's a bunch of levels that determine if a book gets in our library, and there's multiple ways in which a book could ideally be removed. So there's little to say there, but considering that I've been accused of being the devil's advocate numerous times, I would have to say that the reality is, we probably have not chosen books that are controversial enough, because considering the number of buildings that we have and the number, thousands and thousands of books that we have, we have a very limited amount of book challenges in general, when you compare them to the amount of books we have, and the amount of those that rise to the board level that are unresolved is so minimal that I, the question's probably coming from the opposite field, but the reality is, we probably haven't gone out on a limb as a district far enough, opening up reading to students. The other thing I don't believe my fellows mentioned is, there is also the ability for a parent, a family, to choose individually that they want to restrict the books their child has access to. So that would cover, typically, that could cover parental concerns, but the reality is, you know, everybody in this room, everybody in our community has access to books of choice, regardless what their neighbor thinks. Everybody essentially can read- Everybody essentially can read everything. That's the freedom of the press. That's the Second Amendment. That's what we have in this country that other places don't enjoy. Again, if it comes to the board and a book could be voted down as inappropriate for a given grade level or for our district as a whole, but it's uncommon.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm up, and so are you, Lori. So where do achievement gaps appear in the NINA's D P I report card? And are these gaps appearing by school, by race, by poverty level? And what is the board's role in addressing them?
The report card is, as we talked about, the state report card is a really great way to take a look at information that has already happened. It's a kind of a postmortem on things that have already occurred. It does list our student economic disadvantage. And it also lists some quartiles of performance. And currently, the best thing that the report card actually does is shows the learning gap. And we use that as a tool to monitor. One of the big things that affects that report card score is the amount of free and reduced-price lunch students that you have. So the score is either weighted upon the achievement, which is a straight-up test score, or it's weighted on the free and reduced-price lunch, which is the economic disadvantage. So yes, we need to address that. It is something that I've studied. The impact of economic disadvantage on our scores is real. And we are working to do everything that we can to give extra supports to those students once they're identified.
Thank you, Lori. Tara?
So the report card that comes out from the state, it is really confusing to many people. Even some new board members, it's confusing, too. I've been on the board. This will be my second time. And sometimes it's a little confusing. I also don't think that a child solely, their picture presents based off of a score. I think there's a lot more to a child than just a score. It does give us some information on where we need to go, reading and math. You know, those are going to show us where our gaps are. It's really hard lately to, in the last couple of years, to see where those true gaps are. Because the, from the state level, those amounts were actually drastically lowered. So I'm hoping that those will change so we can actually get a good picture of where those gaps are. It does show poverty and performance in there. So as a board, when we look at that, we do look at where we need areas of improvement, what schools need to be targeted more. It gives us a better disadvantage point for some of the students. So it is a good tool for us to use, but it's not the main tool that we should use. We really need to dig deeper into each individual school to get a better roundabout picture.
Thank you. Eric?
There are certainly significant gaps in the D, or the D P I report card, specifically with regards to racial groups and socioeconomic status. Overall, Wisconsin scores better than average on most categories. But if broken down by race, our gaps are actually larger than most other states. And there's certainly things that we should be doing to improve that. I know in reading alone, forty-one percent of students were below proficient in their grade level. And it was significantly worse than that in different racial and socioeconomic groups. And we certainly need to be providing resources to address that. In our district, there's eight elementary schools. And some of those schools have as high as sixty-six percent of the population qualify for free and reduced meals, while other schools only fifteen percent do. So there's a very wide range in our community, just in the different neighborhoods within NINA. We can certainly target the right resources to address those needs better than we are today. And I think there are significant opportunities for improvement. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eric. Tom?
Can we do a reread?
Sure. Where do achievement gaps appear in the NINA's D P I report card? Are those gaps occurring by school, by race, or by poverty level? And what is the board's role in addressing them?
Thank you. Yeah, the D P I shows the items you're talking about. Basically, as my counterparts have said, the report that we get is not by any standard ideal, but it is at least useful in the regard that it compares us against other schools. Just as you do as parents, it's like, gee, is my child lagging behind? Is my child excelling? It's like, is our school lagging behind excelling? Though one thing that has continuously jumped off the sheet at us, however, has been our reading achievement. Basically, students reading well below their grade level. That's been in place for quite a long time. And it's pretty sad that we outscore most of the rest of the state with that. The board's primary role in that is to look at that and charge our chief administrator in setting up, bringing forth really, either policies or procedures that will help to close that gap. We've worked pretty hard at it the last few years and frankly, haven't made a ton of progress. The other thing that we have correlates with the D P I is that within the NINA district, we're excellent at gathering data. But up until the current time, we've not made excellent use of the data that we've had from being reactive. And that is one thing, I believe, in the last year or so, there's been a greater emphasis from the board pushing forward the necessity that, hey, we have the data. We need to use it. Let's not wait for the state to bring forth data that we argue about or don't think is good. Let's get a hold of the data we have and utilize it. Thank you.
Thank you. Kenneth?
So I will agree that the state report card is very confusing to read. But based on what I can understand out of it, it seems like by closing Hoover, we essentially got rid of the biggest black eye in the state report card. But the question remains to be seen. Did we just break those kids up and shift them to other elementaries? And the problem is still there? Or did we actually resolve a problem? And unfortunately, because this is such a lagging indicator, it's going to be another two years before we can actually see the results of that. Another thing that I found to be quite disturbing is that it appears that almost a third of our NINA graduates are below expectations in one or more categories. And so to get to the core of the question, I think that the data is clear that we do have very distinct gaps. If we look at Taft compared to other elementaries, it's statistically lower. If we look at either by race or by income levels, we know that there is a distinct gap in income and in race. So I think that it is upon the board and upon the administration to, as Tom said, take the data that we already have and find out a viable plan of action to address these gaps and help these students get them back to at least proficient, if not better.
Thank you. This question goes to you first, Tara. With children's safety at the top of mind for many parents, what school policies would you suggest to improve safety without disrupting the learning environment?
Can you read it one more time, please?
I'm sorry?
Can you read it one more time, please? I'm sorry.
With children's safety at the top of mind for many parents, what school policies would you suggest to improve safety without disrupting the learning environment?
So I think the number one policy that I would really make sure that we are on top of for, in regards to children's safety, is for intruders. I think that that is, having a case that was so close to home in Madison, you know, is really eye-opening, that we need to really look at, are our buildings safe? And do we have a good safety plan? When you look at the high school, a lot of the high school is all windows. If you were to ask many of those students, and if you were to ask many of that staff, did they feel safe? Many of them would tell you, no. They don't feel safe being in a building all full of glass. So I do think that the safety policies and procedures to ensure that our kids are safe and that our teachers feel safe is number one. You know, it's kind of sad that our kids have to come up with an intruder safety plan and that they have to, you know, my kid comes home and says, Mom, we have to be super quiet and we can't move. And so they're telling me all about this plan. And that's really sad that, you know, our students of so young have to go through that. But that's the reality of things. So just making sure that our kids have the knowledge of what our plans are, that they feel safe, and that our teachers feel safe are number one. And I do think we can keep getting better with that as well.
Thank you. Eric?
From talking with the community, one of the things that I've heard is the vast majority of children do feel safe in our schools. And I've heard that from parents, from educators, from the administration. There are certainly exceptions, but overall, our schools are very conducive to learning, and children do feel safe there. One of the things that the school has done in recent years is a secure entry to every building. People need to go in through the main office and check in. There's no unrestricted access in our buildings anywhere. And I think that's been a big improvement. One thing we can do to improve safety is certainly to promote anti-bullying and mental health initiatives. Definitely enforcing our policies with anti-bullying and making sure everyone is aware of the reporting process. One of the other things that could greatly help our district, and going back to a previous question with the achievement gaps as well, would be more social workers in our schools, especially some of our more economically disadvantaged elementary schools, as well as our middle school and our high school. There's only one social worker in our middle school right now, and the need is certainly great. Providing families with more resources and connecting them with social workers would certainly help make our schools be safer and make students feel safer both in school and at home. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom?
Safety is a topic that's very subjective. What one family figures is Fort Knox, and other family figures is wander on in and off the playground. So that's always a difficult balance to make. But looking at the history not only of our nation with the horrible things that have happened, but with our students and our own lives, we'll find, of course, as a rule, that the hazard often comes from within. And Eric's point on bullying, that would be a huge issue if we would start to walk the walk or we talk the talk on bullying. The reality is, there's far too many instances that are overlooked or downplayed within the buildings where the students spend their day and have the contact with other people that are making that situation seem unsafe or unsuited for education. And I completely concur that as a rule, the vast majority of the families I speak with, they feel that their students are safe. They do ask questions about, would you support adding this? What are your thoughts on that? But there's very few people that come more forward and say, my kid's afraid to go to school or afraid to be there, or I think when I drop him off, I'll never see him again. Unfortunately, tragedies happen. We don't have anything going on right now in our district on a regular basis that is inviting that type of tragedy. So we really need to work where the unrest comes from is within our midst.
Thank you. Kenneth?
So I think that there's no question that just the sheer size of the high school, the amount of students in one area, and the size of the middle school. I mean, I've seen community colleges that are smaller than our new high school. And it's frankly concerning that parents feel like the brand-new high school has an inherent flaw with too many windows. But I would definitely echo the fact that bullying is the primary concern because we do have secure access. And the sad thing about bullying is it frequently goes unreported because fear of retribution or fear of being ostracized. So how do you address that? I think that the district is moving in the right direction. The current budget plan has an increase of three social workers net next year. That's a step in the right direction. There's also going to be funds available, it appears, due to staff retirements and some additional discretionary money. So maybe that could even be approved further. But ultimately, kids need to feel safe at home, to feel safe at school. It's a vicious circle. If you don't have a good home life, it's hard to feel comfortable at school. And that's where we have the opportunity to reach out. Definitely, if we could look towards a community engagement model, a community-school model like some of the schools in Appleton, I think that would be a step in the right direction for some of our schools that struggle with achievement gaps.
Thank you. Lori?
I agree that our facilities actually, we focused a lot on our safety plan and have really great relationships with the municipalities in that regard. But to me, the number one thing is focusing on an inclusive environment. And that includes anti-bullying, as was mentioned. Also, a focus on mental health. We practice trauma-informed care. We train our staff. Also, we are trained and look at recognizing adverse childhood experiences, which could impact someone. We work to build relationships because we know that those kids that are the one that were sitting alone at the table are the ones we have to worry about the most. We work on teacher training. We offer things like sources of strength. And in terms of, you know, not having to cost anything, also the See Something, Say Something program. If we had anonymous reporting, you, Kenneth had mentioned about bullying, maybe people are afraid to report. We want kids to be involved and have relationships with at least one adult at our schools and to feel included. And that'll go a long way towards creating safety for all of our students with an inclusive environment.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to go to you, Eric. And this is the speed round. It's going to go down to one minute each due to the time. Our school vouchers, good or bad for public schools? And specifically for NINA schools?
School vouchers are certainly bad for NINA schools. The last year, we lost 3.8 million to private schools taking money out of our district. And that, without a doubt, diminished the education of students who attend public school. There are two types of school choice. Vouchers is one, which diminishes the education of our students. But there's also federal or state and federal subsidies for tuition that does not diminish opportunities for our students. So I'm not opposed to school choice, but I am opposed to voucher programs because that does harm our district. And over the past three years, I believe we've lost more than 7 million. And the amount we're losing every year increases. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom?
Yes, I'll confirm the information we just heard is good. Thank you. And just as a footnote on that, obviously, taking money out of public education, which we were talking about numerous ways in which budgets are strained, obviously, taking more money out of the budget is detrimental to the students of the district, especially in a district that's relatively high-performing. If we had a low-performing district, then that's kind of where the idea was born. The biggest thing to leave you with is a thought of that disparity that we currently have is we don't actually get very much money as a school district from the federal government. We get primarily from the state and from you guys, the taxpayers. Ultimately, what we're losing in vouchers, never given to the district, paid out to the other sources, is pretty close to comparable, actually, in the total federal funds we're now receiving for all of our programs. Just to give you a little float of what that might look like if you're trying to budget on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Kenneth?
So I found it eye-opening that thirty-one percent of our mil rate is actually going to vouchers. A dollar forty-eight out of the five seventy-seven is being taken by private schools. And there is a loophole that I think the legislature really needs to address, where they only have to give education for three weeks. And then they can essentially say, this kid is too difficult. And then it goes back to the public school without the funding. They get to keep the funding, and the public school now has to pick up the tab with the loss of income. And also, I think that, you know, I think Wisconsin is unique in the fact that they will also reimburse the parents for transportation to private schools, which is something they were going to do anyways. And that also comes out of district funds. So I'm a big fan of open enrollment. I think that's great to let parents decide which public school they want to send their kids to. But the way that the Wisconsin Legislature has enacted this voucher program is definitely bad for NINA public schools.
Thank you. Lori? Lori.
Yes, I agree. I'm not sure that the local taxpayers are aware, but twenty-six percent of the local tax levy is going to private schools. And that is something that the state cannot afford, nor should the property taxpayers have to carry the burden of two separate educational systems. There are not consistent standards for our voucher schools. They are not accountable in the same way that public schools are. And 3.8 million dollars has been taken out of the NINA budget alone. So yes, they are not good for NINA. Not good for our schools. And it's a constitutional violation, in my opinion.
Thank you. Tara.
The effectiveness and fairness of school vouchers largely depend on the specifics of programs designed and implications. While vouchers have the potential to expand educational opportunities and stimulate improvements throughout competition, careful policy design is needed to ensure that public schools continue to receive adequate support and all students have the access to quality education. I also want to let everyone know that when the private school has their requirements and public education has theirs, they're not having to equal that. They're not having to have the same standards that a public education is having. And I, I do see a problem with that. They're taking public funds, but they're not having to acquire, to the same requirements that we are as a public school system. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this is when you each can have one minute for any additional statement you wish to make. And we'll start with you Ken.
Sure. So I've learned a lot in the past couple of months since a couple of friends convinced me that I should try to run for school board. And I, I'll say that one policy that I think is really underutilized is Policy 9140, the opportunity for a citizens advisory committee. I know that it, I believe it was in place when they were discussing the referendum in the new high school, but I think that's something that should be ongoing. To have an additional voice from the community to the school board would be great. And I also think that one of the things that the board can benefit from more than anything is continued community engagement. So the opportunity to talk to people in the community, the opportunity to hear different opinions, not only from parents, but also from taxpayers, I think would go a long way to improving the trust and improving the value of the NINA joint school district.
Thank you Ken. Tom.
Hi, well, thank you all for coming. I appreciate your attendance. I feel a little bit sad that I recognize almost every one of you from future things. I, I like to believe far more of our NINA community cares more than what we see. But that is the part where I'd like to increase involvement, get people to feel more comfortable to come and have their opinions heard, so they want to come. So thank you for that. I also want to do a quick perk for Fox Cities Advocates for Public Education. Regardless of how you feel about it, they have an online video of some sort that shows excellently where tax money in the state goes regarding education. That's cool. Thank you so much, ladies from the League of Women Voters and gentlemen, for doing this for fifty-plus years. That's appreciated. And thank you all, my fellow candidates. As I heard your answers, I think we'd all make a great school board member. If you could roll us all up a ball, you'd have something really going on. So if you're looking for someone who comes all the time, is informed on the issues, I am your guy. If you're looking for a bad candidate, I don't know, we have one here, folks.
Thank you Tom. Eric.
I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this event and giving the community the opportunity to hear from the candidates. I think we are in for some big challenges at the state and national level in the coming years. On the federal level, the president has stated his goal is to dismantle the Department of Education. That means taking away fundings for programs that feed, educate, and protect all of our students. This will disproportionately impact our most vulnerable and underserved students and families. The federal free and reduced meals programs for students has already been threatened. Even if these things don't come to pass, there will be other issues that the board will need to find creative and evidence-based solutions for, to keep our district functioning and meeting the needs of our community. If elected to the Board of Education, I will do everything in my power to ensure that our students have access to the programs that they need to be successful and to ensure that partisanship does not impact our decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Tara.
Something I just wanted to, that I didn't get a chance to touch on, is that I do feel bullying is a big problem in our school, both in the middle school and the high school. It just can't be stressed enough. Yes, we have policies, but the problem is, is that we need to enforce those policies and we need to follow through with those policies. So a policy is not good if we're not going to follow it and if we're not going to follow the consequences that would adhere from that policy being broken. Many students are struggling with mental health because they're being bullied. It's constantly a topic in our community, with many mom pages have it. Many groups are talking about it. It's a big problem. Our middle school is really big. Does it need more help? It does. But we really need to get to the nitty-gritty of that bullying issue in our community. Thank you.
Thank you Tara. Lori.
I just want to say I'm committed to providing the best possible education for all of our kids. I will ensure that we listen to our educators, involve them in the decision-making and lift up the positive story of education. I also will advocate for consistent standards for all schools that accept public taxpayer dollars, including reporting test scores in the state report cards. And I'm committed to the importance of public education to foster civic engagement, tolerance, experiential learning, relationship building, and to best prepare students for a successful and happy life. I want to say thank you again to the League of Women Voters and my colleagues up here and to the city of NINA for hosting this event. It would be an honor to continue to serve and I ask for your vote on April 1st to continue our important work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This concludes the forum for NINA's School Board. On Tuesday, April 1st, you may vote for three of these candidates. The polls are open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Everyone must show a photo ID with your picture on it. You may register when you go to vote on Election Day. Take a proof of residence with you. Early in-person voting allows voters who cannot reach their polling place on Election Day to vote beforehand. Check with your city or town clerk for early voting availability. You can go to myvote.wi.gov to find information on registration, ballot, acceptable photo IDs, and polling places. Go to vot411.org to learn more about these candidates and everyone else on your ballot. You may also consider voting early or absentee. Be sure to contact your clerk. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Winnebago County, I want to thank you all for participating. We greatly appreciate that. Remember, our democracy depends on citizen involvement and voting has consequences. Please vote on April 1st.